So, we don't have any mail on bill Friday for us. Just like this. Uh, anybody for open forum? Um, so we have yay, the CMRC zoning diagnostic discussion.
Thank you very much.
Feel free to grab the chair. Is that gonna...
Oh, sure.
Yeah, unless you can't.
I didn't realize that you guys had this fancy new television. Otherwise, I would've just dropped my presentation rather than printing it.
Yeah, I'm not thinking when people are telling us that they could...
Uh, I just, yeah, I didn't realize that was a new thing. Um, so let me give you...
No, we forgot about it.
This is the ones, these are the ones that are actually stapled correctly. I'll give you the proper staples.
You can be up and just pass them out.
That. Um, and can you remind me who the chair is? Who are the chair? Okay, I only have one copy of this. This is the printed copy of the actual matrix, but I figured I would give that to you. So, you'll probably end up passing it to Randy anyways, but... So, what I was hoping to do this evening is to give you an update on the zoning diagnostic, talk about what we did.
One more?
Oh, yeah, sure.
There's two of them, this office.
Yeah, there's just a couple of pages on that. Um, just to give you a sense of what it was that we did and what the next steps are gonna be for the process to finish it up. So, what we did, just to remind everybody, uh, we were, we've been talking to a couple of towns and we were given, uh, we were asked to, to look at, uh, do an analysis of the existing zoning for Charlton and Auburn. And the model that we did, we used was this model that we'd found for a town in Georgia, which I can never remember the name of, but I wrote it down here. It is, I thought I wrote it down here. Wrote it down here. Avondale Estates, page two. So, but essentially what this does is it creates just a nice spreadsheet, takes goals from land use plans, puts it at the top, puts all of your zoning articles down there, and as you're reading it, you're just able to make a rough assessment of whether or not the, uh, the bylaw is matching the goals that you've articulated. Just to remind everybody what it was that we were doing. Uh, so we've completed the draft of this process. We've gone through, I've gone through the entire bylaw. We've, instead of the way that the Avondale one was set up is it gave symbols, so instead it was like either an equals or a minus or some kind of symbol. I thought that wasn't terribly useful for summarizing, so instead I assigned a numeric score. So, if it was, if we felt, if I felt it meant the objective, it was given a plus one. If I felt it didn't, it was given a minus one. And if it didn't have any effect, it was given a score of zero. Um, so, the other thing that I would caveat before we take a look at, um, sort of the, some of the information we found, is I just wanna make sure everybody remembers that this, this is, you know, my understanding of the goals, my reading of the bylaw, absent other local context that may influence thing, and then my understanding of best practices. So, obviously, there may be some things that you'll look at that and you'll say, "Oh, well, there was this context, there was this case from years ago that this is why we had this in there." So, it's probably is more fitting than you would think, given the history of the town. So, none of that was taken into consideration. Um, this is really just to give you guys a chance to sort of, at a glance, look at what, um, what areas on the bylaw might need the most immediate attention. So, if you're able to, you can look at it and see that certain sections had lower scores than others, so you can say, "Well, maybe those are the ones that are more deserving of immediate attention." The third page just gives a little, this page here just gives a little overview of how the matrix was set up. All of the goals were, like I said, lined across the top. The scores, each, every single one was given, that score of negative one, zero, plus one, and then they were tallied up at the end. And then I added comments into the farthest column to try to help explain what it was I was thinking and why we gave the score that we gave. So, the next three, uh, the next sections are showing some summaries of what the initial findings were. Generally, the average score was .74. So, essentially, what that's saying is that's slightly up in the positive range, but very lowly in the positive range. The range of scores that you could have for any one thing would either be, would range from negative seven to positive seven, given the fact that there were seven objectives that we had. So, it's very, very neutral. There's a lot of negative, but there are also a few positive aspects of there. So, there is definitely a lot of work, and one of the things that we're gonna produce is I'm gonna have, in the sum, the final summary that I give you guys, I'm gonna expand on each one of those sections, clarify some of the notes, like I did in the sections in the pages in the presentation that follow, um, so that way you can have a clearer document about what we were thinking, you know, how, how we came to the conclusions we got. This is just giving you a sense of what it is. So, it's, it's a pretty mixed deck. Um, the... Sections with the lowest score, um, was section three, as most people, I think most people expected, on the board at least. The use table had the most problems. The business use table was one of the ones that had a lot of problems. Mostly from a, uh, the best practices standpoint, when the bylaw was written, there were a lot of places, of, uh, of uses that were put in place with just the, uh, site plan review power oversight on it. And obviously, is, site plan review is not something that is, you really have a lot of authority over. It doesn't really give the planning board much control over what it is that goes into certain sections. And so, that's one of the reasons why there was, there was a lot of those, very few special permit uses, which in certain circumstances is a good thing, but, you know, when you have some, uh, not necessarily appropriate uses in certain districts, you know, and there's a few that I've highlighted here. So, just to kinda walk through a couple of those, the first section, and I, I did three sections of three, like most challenging sections, um, just to show you sort of what I'm intending to do as the final deliverable, which will come, uh, before the, before Christmas, hopefully, um, but definitely before the end of the year. So, I've taken the comments that were in there and tried to clarify them a little bit. So, for instance, with the uses and intensity regulations, uh, the business uses, um, we found that there were definitely a wide range of defined uses, maybe too many, um, very, very specific, uh, definitions that were in there. Tons and many, many of these were, again, uh, in either by right or, uh, site plan review uses, which may or may not be things that you, there would definitely be something you wouldn't wanna look at, because you, there are things that are in there that you may wanna have more authority over than what site plan review offers. And just because, you know, obviously, the, the way that master plan law treats site plan review, it's never actually been codified, so it's, it's something that is definitely a prime challenge, so I'm sure you all know. The other example I gave is... We have the recreational uses, which got a overall score of negative five. You know, when you're thinking that there's a lot of recreational uses, like golf courses and campgrounds, and these, again, are just site plan approval, and they're not necessarily in, uh, they're, they're not special permit uses, there are things that can have a huge impact on land use, and having such limited authority isn't always necessarily a best practice for something like that. Similar to residential uses, there's major subdivisions, which, again, is only site plan approval. A lot of communities would wanna have a special permit process over something like that. And this is just sort of, this is just to give you an idea of what it is that, that the finished product is gonna ultimately have. And what we're hoping is that you'll be able to take this, consider it, it'll be summarized in enough of a format that you'll be able to, uh, use this moving into the next phase of the project, which I understand that you're undertaking.
So, right now, we're actually accepting, um, proposals. We have an IPO, and I'm assuming the CMRC today submits?
Yes, it did. I never read here.
Yes, yes, we did. So, that's something that, that would be, I'm, we're hoping that this will be able to give you guys the sense of really what this is gonna be for, so that you can be able to, to figure out how to prioritize that process. So, ultimately, when you go through the, the wider zoning analysis, you'll be able to come out of it with a list of, this is the low hanging fruit, these are the things that we should probably address immediately, and then have a actionable timeline for picking what to do with that. So, the final deliverables for this is obviously going to be a document that's gonna have every, all of the sections ranked by their score. I would, I'm gonna do it unless you have an objective of negative to positive, just because we figure you're looking to reform things, so that would probably be an easier way for you guys to deal with it. And then also give you a digital handprint versions of the matrix that's there. Hopefully, this'll be something that you guys can use as you go forward, if you have new, um, you know, planning projects, you have new, uh, town goals, you'll be able to incorporate it and update it. It really didn't take that terribly long. The, the length of it was really just getting a solid enough time for me to sit down and read through the entire thing and get an understanding of all the sections. I had to read through it a couple of times to really grasp it. But if you're doing it, you know, a section at a time, maybe, you know, one section every few months, if you're, like, if you're trying to keep it updated, I think this is potentially a good tool for towns to use, to help them, you know, narrow in, 'cause it can be so, it can open up such a can of worms that, uh, you know, having a nice focus for this, I think can be very useful. So, I was pretty pleased with, with the way it came out, and it definitely helped our...
Very helpful, just from the little viewpoints.
So, uh, do you have any questions for us?
Well, actually, I, I've treated on some key points here. I gotta agree with it, like, the business use and everything, like, they're allowed in too many places, so if we're trying to focus on the town, maybe, certainly, the way they're written now, it's like, we can pretty much do whatever you want anywhere, we might not necessarily be the right program.
Yeah, I think that's, like, the business uses, that's one of the reasons why it ended up getting such a low score, because one of the goals is obviously trying to channel business use into certain areas of town, and the fact that they're basically allowed by right almost anywhere that business uses are allowed makes that very difficult. There's very few uses that were really narrowly tailored to specific neighborhoods and specific districts. So, that was a, that was a big...
Excellent. You made one of the one of the subdivisions, too, as well, on, then, my experience, when I've done it, usually, like, with the subdivision is, it's a smaller subdivision, so it's not financially cumbersome or even the processes. You pick a number like, you know, a subdivision under ten lots, you would have the site plan. Over ten lots would be a special permit, where you'd get more control over it. So, we wouldn't need to turn for a smaller type developer. I mean, it could be whatever number that we feel suitable for Charlton, but...
Yeah. Well, that's why I was surprised when I saw that, that it was specifically called out major, major residential subdivision as a use that was only, that only had reviewable as a site plan.
Right.
And I was like, "Oh, that's very," I haven't, I actually haven't seen that before, to be honest with you. And I'm, I'm suspecting probably what it was, was that it was written in at a time before the, uh, the powers of site plan review were really clearly laid out, 'cause I know a lot of the cases that determines that, you know, you really don't have the ability to deny something based on site plan review. They've been fairly, in the last, like, 20 years, 30 years, so it's, I don't know, I don't recall when this, when the first draft of this was written, but I believe it was in the seventies, or...
Our bylaws?
Yeah.
No, we didn't even adopt bylaws, zoning until the eighties.
Oh, oh, it was in the eighties, oh, okay.
Yeah. We were one of the latest.
Yeah, when I saw that, I was surprised, I was like, "Whoa."
Well, we were such a, we were a farming community right up until maybe the late eighties.
Probably had a lot of perspective.
Yeah. Makes sense, I mean, there's a...
And anything that had, anything to do with agriculture, there could be no restrictions. You could pretty much, you know, drop a farm and some animals anywhere. And now, and now we need to kind of pay attention, you know, if you, you, residential areas, we, you know, and the, the times have kinda changed where people aren't gonna be up at arms when you say, "Oh, no, 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 you can't, you can't have a farm..."
Yeah.
"...on a one and a half acre with your, your neighbors, with those kind of setbacks and stuff, some restrictions."
Yeah.
The public won't be able to accept that at this point. We have the, um, the little situation where we all have talked about the, uh, position, the, the new mushroom farm, you know? Where by right, there, it's a, they grow mushrooms, it's agricultural use, but it's kinda got plopped in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and the kind of building that a mushroom's growing is a warehouse.
Yeah.
It's actually the village district, which forces it to be close to the street, instead of setback.
Yeah, exactly. So, it's 15 feet setback because it's village. So, it's very, it kinda kicked us by not, and there's plenty of locations in town that would be perfect for it, it's just that that...
That wasn't one of them.
So, we wanna make sure, we've learned, we wanna make sure that we're...
So, and that was one of the situations where there wasn't much that the planning board to do about it?
They didn't even have to come to Farnsworth.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and that's where, you know, in today's world, you know, before, like I'm saying, I'd have a blanket agricultural permitted use anywhere and everywhere, but time has changed, where that's not, I mean, what are the two large farms in Charlton now anymore? So, it's not like we're having a serious impact on agriculture by revamping our zoning to not possibly make agriculture permitted use everywhere. Right, right.
Certainly, at least, like, not on smaller lots.
Right. Well, I say, I think that's where you can work on is that, I don't know what the acre amount is in Massachusetts, but most states will have, like, to be a farm assessed property tax-wise, you could have a certain amount of acreage. So, you can go by that, so you can't, you won't penalize anybody by trying to think of that, against of that tax advantage, right? Didn't say you have to do anything smaller than that. I mean, usually, it's a substantial amount of land, acres or whatever it is, I don't know.
Or even the zoning itself, is that we're so, we're so incorrectly zoned. We have so much, so much agricultural, and if you, if you go into those neighborhoods, a lot of those are subdivisions, and, I mean, they're clearly residential neighborhoods, and they're zoned agricultural with all the rights.
Jane, is there another copy of this?
I have another copy.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna give this to you.
Is that your, is that your only copy?
Okay.
What's the trip there, Rex?
He knows it by heart.
No, I got, yeah, I got, uh, I made six copies, 'cause I wanted to check out how many people are gonna be here.
Do we have other?
Um, it, it, it looks really good. I mean, it's, it's, it's a good start to, to give us an idea of what's going on. Still on schedule for end of the year, I assume? Okay.
Puts more needs in mind. See, more negative than positive.
Well, I mean, it's, a lot of the stuff is, I agree with you.
Yeah.
We've seen, we've had problems in these areas before, so it's gonna get that, that take care of. I think one of our goals that we had been talking about was, was maybe changing the, the name of our agricultural district to something like the large lot as an actual RSC, or something like that, just to take the name out, so it makes things a little bit more clear, that these are really residential areas, they're not farms, you know? Most of our town right now, eighty, something percent is zoned agriculture, but it's, it's on neighborhoods.
Yeah.
People say, "Hey, it's agriculture, so I can do whatever I want."
I think we already have two Rs, right? So, I, I, one of the comments was...
There's an R40 in RSC, yeah.
We have a lot, can I read it, Ron, that we have a lot of different types of zoning?
Yeah, that was one of the, I don't think I put it in that comment, but there's something I put in here that it's, it's, the, uh, the number of, of categories is potentially cumbersome.
So, and, and is that, it's different than what other towns have, they have more than...
Well, no, not necessarily. But most of the towns, they do have a similar number of, or considering trying to, to shrink that down, trying to consolidate some of them, um, or just reclassify it so that it's a little bit clearer what it is. I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, but I believe I remembered seeing the comment, um, that I had made, that there was, it's like, it's unclear that there's the village district, and then there's a couple of, like, neighborhood business, and then another district, and it's not entirely clear what the difference is between all of them, and what they're supposed, what, what purpose they're supposed to be serving. So, even just clarifying that, or maybe combining a couple of them, or changing would, would be useful, 'cause it would make it less confusing, but it would also, uh, make it easier to manage.
If the village district, um, we, and you were around for that, too. I think that everybody had, when we, when we were looking at the master plan and we made that change, we were really looking to go, to bring small businesses into the downtown, residential, mixed uses, bakeries with pockets on top and that kind of thing. And I think we, the only way we thought it would pass is if we kept that agricultural piece in. We didn't think it would actually pass town meeting and get to thirds of a vote if we took the, you could plump a mushroom farm in the middle of it.
Yeah.
That kind of, we did, I mean, I mean, obviously, we didn't think about that, but we want it not to pass, so that's why it's kind of wide open. It was just kind of the first step to create that, to, yeah, correct, you know, create that downtown feel.
The town ecosystem is a little different now than it was back then, so...
So, right, so now, now, I think it'll be much more easily able for the, you know, the average person has a home, they might have some chickens or something, but they're not really worried about opening up a big, you know, commercial farm or anything like that. There's no dairy farms or...
There might be a possibility of combining the community business with business enterprise, and you could be regulated by the size of the lot. Community business, you're going for the smaller lot size, to identify, you're going for the larger lot size, so you might like, be able to, to do one zone, but specify what it would take to, so you don't have somebody trying to build a large building, I can get food 20 where it's inappropriate, but, you know, a strip mall, just trying to, they're not really building, would be appropriate, so...
And block stores aren't really happening anymore. It's not really the trend of, of the, the future. It's, I mean, at least, so, it definitely sucked all that multi to be looked at for zoning, and it kind of, in the back of our minds, keep the master plan stuff, 'cause as soon as we're done with the zoning, I know it's in the wrong direction, so we'll have to jump right into the master plan.
Yeah.
So, it's definitely gonna be, be interesting.
Well, it's actually, it's not a bad way to do it, 'cause obviously, when you're doing master plans for, if you're doing the land use, housing, economic development, analyzing the zoning is a huge piece of it, so if you've already got that basic analysis going, and then you go into the, the master plan, um, it's, it's not a bad, uh, way to be able to feed the information into that process.
Thank you very much. This is very helpful. I'm excited to do what we're supposed to be doing and look at, look at zoning.
Well, good. Um, so, like I said, I'm gonna try to get this done, I'm, I'm hoping to get this done before Christmas, so that we can have a final document for everybody for the beginning of the year. And at the very least, it'll be before the, the year, so...
Bordeaux's with the, you know, we, they haven't even seen anything yet.
Yeah.
But, I mean, if they chose CMRC, would you be working on that project, or would the other people at CMRC?
Potentially. We, it depends on what ends up coming down, down the pike. We have a couple of, uh, master planning projects that may or may not come to fruition. But we also have someone who's gonna be starting soon, who's got a lot of land use experience. So, I will be involved in the project. I don't know if I'll necessarily be the, the person, the face of it, but I'll definitely be involved in it, so...
Do we, wanna put you on an, an agenda coming up in January, or...
We have meeting the eighth and the 23rd in January. I don't know if you're, you'll be ready for January, or do you want to...
Sure, yeah. I can get it for...
You, you might wanna shoot for the 28th, if it happens, we have those two applications on the eighth. Twenty-third might be a better night. The eighth might be a busy night, that's why.
Sure. The 22nd, even if it got pushed off to the first...
But, I mean, we, we'll get you in, that won't be a problem, if you want the eighth.
The only thing about the 23rd, yeah, the eighth would be better for me. I have a medical procedure, I'm gonna be out for a couple days.
Oh, then we'll schedule you for the eighth, that's no problem. We'll get you in.
And if that's not...
22nd.
22nd. So, I mean, the other one, if, if January 8th seems tied to February 5th, seems...
Oh, yeah, 'cause everything's pushed up in, are you gonna be out for a while?
No, just a couple of days.
Oh, 'cause we'll... Next week is February 5th?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, thankfully, I'm not booked that far.
I mean, we'll... We'll pencil in for the eighth for now, if you want, so, 'cause I honestly, these app patients, think they're gonna come in, like, "I'm not home at that," so, you might end up with nothing to do, so...
Right, so, yeah, we have, so we have, we're already, you're already on the agenda for the eighth?
Oh, okay.
Okay, perfect, alright.
And if anything, if you need a change or anything, just let us know.
Alright, I'll, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Good work.
So, we have the all of our site plan decommissioning law?
Yeah. Um, they are trying to finish the project out. We've been involved, Mike Andrews, he has signed off on it. They had a couple of items they had to take care of in order to close it out, one being, um, they had to violate decommissioning law, and estimate, and, uh, landscaping laws, which they have done that. The email on top is basically Mike's review, saying he is satisfied with the numbers they have presented, so, in the, um, conditions of approval, is the planning board had to approve both the, uh, landscaping, uh, performance guarantee, and also this decommissioning law, which is that you'll, if you're satisfied with them, you have to take action on them tonight. And they also, one of the other conditions, which really doesn't involve dollars and census, but they had to provide a, uh, a maintenance, uh, aftercare program, which they have done that.
Okay, so, this, this decommissioning bond is one of the ones that we originally approved, and now, what's happening is the project is being sold, and it just kind of getting re, we reviewed, we reviewed by Mike, so there, there's nothing that we can really do to change. Because since this happened, we got a lot more information about the, um, how bad these, how bad these were.
The cost has gone up.
That, that potentially, that whole, that whole entire scrap value actually maybe is a negative number and not a positive number.
Right.
Because it's more about, um, uh, they don't, they don't recycle, they're garbage and they're toxic waste, so they're expensive to get rid of. But, um, um, I'm thinking that there's really nothing, we can't really modify that, where, where we already have approved a...
Yeah, it's already gone to the approval process, based on those numbers, so at this point, you couldn't really...
So, which numbers, the, the 7,300 or the 45,000?
Forty-five thousand.
So, we don't think that's sufficient at this time?
But we already have, so there was...
Sure, okay.
So, I'm not sure how much of the, the, um, Laurie Gagnon is, you know, really the, the champion of all research that comes to solar, and it's true, we all can say that, she probably knows more than, um, anybody that's talent, I think she's really on top of this stuff. So, she always just copies me on all, all the information she sends, and I try to keep it up to date with it. And there's so much good research about the, the decommissioning of these, of, um, of these solar farms now, because it was thought, quote, these panels could be recycled, and now they're saying that they actually, there's actually a cost to get rid of them, not there, really not, because, like, well, they're, they're toxic waste and, um...
Yeah, they have to pay.
...themselves. So, um, but I don't think there's much they can do, I just think going forward and sending the board to know that, um, maybe it's worth, um, bringing in a, a solar consultant, or doing, at least doing more research to make sure that we're, um, not that Mike isn't doing an awesome job or anything else, I'm just, maybe that, maybe he just doesn't know about the decommissioning of solar...
Yeah, it's a specialized field, yeah.
And what about the ones that are coming down, the batteries? So, the batteries...
The board should have a discussion on that before they approve anything.
'Cause the batteries, the batteries could have a lot of, and, and if you've been keeping up, I'm not sure, I mean, um, I know Laurie sends a lot to Randy, and sends a lot to the board, like, just for informational purposes, nothing that we, that's really in front of our bases. But we believe that a lot of the, um, solar facilities that are already up are gonna wanna bring in these batteries, 'cause that's the future. I, this, the, the, the big money in all of the new tax credits is all, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, um, the, all the tax credits now are in this battery storage, what they wanna do is they wanna hold this power until the, the cost of, of, of other... wanna do is they wanna hold this power until the, the cost of, of, of other heating goes up, or electricity goes up, and now they have this stored power, that's how they make their money out of it.
Take care of the peaks.
And these batteries aren't, they're the size of trailer trucks, and...
Yeah, all these, all the towns are having the same, I had a call from, um, planning board members, two different, two other towns, where they're struggling with the same thing, what is gonna be the proper number for this, so, that's time, I mean, we have, what, potentially thirty projects, they could have batteries on them, and say, two batteries a site.
They, they would have a battery list, right?
Oh, yeah, but, that's the thing, so, we've, and two of them are sitting right there.
Right there. Because we, we have the determination, we want them to come back for, and hold the site plan, not just a modification, because the potentiality is...
What was the comment from Kurt in the email, uh, a couple, a month ago, about modifying what, for the batteries that he looked at, so that, he kind of...
He felt it was a site plan modification?
Yeah.
Well, a field modification, he thought it was, but, he's just looking at it, you know, it's a cement pad with a box on it, it's...
Yeah, but that...
But because of what that box is, it's a little more than that.
It skirts around any of our preview to take a financial number on.
You're not even supposed to throw a battery away in the trash.
Sure, well, this has its...
So, if you have a battery the size of a trailer truck, we need to just make sure...
Sure, if there's a catastrophic failure of, of any of those batteries within, then it could cause a...
But, well, do they leak, I mean, who knows, I mean, that's also that the board of health should have some plan too, what else is, what is the public health piece of this, so, as that, um, we'll need to reassess that, but in the meantime, we have...
So, back to this, we've, let me see what we have here, we have, we've got a landscaping bond, and we've got a decommissioning bond, is that...
That's correct, so we take action on both of them.
So, that's all that was open, so we're waiting for them to do this, and then, so what, what are we being asked to do, we're being asked to...
The, um, the planning board has to prove these numbers, and if they do, then they will post the bond.
So, if, if we think it's gonna be more expensive than this, then why can't we go back and, and change it, because the cost to do this now is increased?
I don't know if legally we can, because it's already...
When we approve the site plan, when we approve the site plan, what did we, did we have numbers, or did we say based upon Graves', I don't remember if there was actual numbers there, because I would be, um, if we had the ability to, to remove that, and it's only ten thousand...
Where is, where is this thing, I'll get it, is this on?
Carroll Hill Road, right at the beginning, yeah.
Oh, it's right on the corner, right on...
The Carroll Hill.
There, one, one. Right, right behind the CrossFit, right, eight minutes.
Is that, is that, is that this one, the one behind the, the CrossFit?
Yes.
Okay. And, has that project been reviewed, and it meets?
Yes, Mike's been, he's done a final site inspection on it, everything is accurate, um, so, he's, he's satisfied, I actually have his site review here, he's satisfied with everything that they've done there.
They reserve it, I wouldn't think they put a battery in that site, because...
They can't, well, they, they can't, unless they're on that list, but, I mean, if that's where all the, so there's no more money to be made really on solar, besides these battery storage, that's, I, I think that all of the new legislation that's gone out there is all about the storage now, so we can get the tax credits, and that's where the...
This is amount to be reviewed and recommended by Graves' engineer, that's how this, um, and he has submitted the numbers to Mike Andrews, um, for the decommissioning, which I agree, that's where it's a specialized area, I mean, I don't know how much can be done about this particular one, Mike was already made a decision, but you might want to look at that.
When I look around, what other towns are doing for these decommissioning bonds, and if you look at the size of these, compared to other, I am, we are, we're below half of what we're doing for bonds, so, I'm not sure, like, I'm seeing hundred thousand dollar bonds, decommissioning bonds, and, and same-sized projects, so, are they just being super conservative, or are we, are we just wrong, so that's, that's what kind of scares me a little bit, um, and, and both of those answers could be right, as far as I know, I do know that...
It's definitely economy scale, I mean, one that we watched, the five or six or so.
And I was looking at the same size.
We're looking at twenty-five dollars per module to, to recycle?
Yeah, if you were recycling, maybe, but, yeah.
I mean, that looks like it, it's a number that we could easily get information on.
Well, that's, actually, you know, might be helpful to speak to Laurie Gagnon, because of all her research, how's Mike about to study this and base it on some, some sort of science or whatever?
She's in the other meeting?
I think I'm reading that, is that they're not recycling it, they're throwing it away at twenty-five dollars.
Right.
So, they're not really, they're disposing it.
So, we're watching, um, does anybody have an issue with Laurie, she's actually in the other select room, do you want to go, or?
Well, I...
Is that alright?
It's kind of a misnomer, saying recycling, they're actually just throwing it away in some way.
Right.
They'll, they'll recycle the metal, not the, the frame, the land.
But that's not, that's not, they're not accounting that as part of their profit towards their, their scrap work.
So, they're, they're, yeah, if I look online, they're saying ten to twenty dollars per module to recycle this, maybe that, I think you get double for eight or ten dollars. Depending on the transfer.
Well, yeah, you would know.
That's not bad, that's, I think their, their numbers are, are pretty, I mean, the labor rates on the operators decent, I guess, I mean, for an excavator.
But he's sitting on the ground, on, you know, a cement basis, so they're not...
Well, they have, uh, the balance, that's a balance.
Yeah, they're not sitting on, uh, they're not found...
What is the, um, what is the, um, time limit wise, what do we, um, do we have to make a decision, decision right now, are they waiting for us?
Yeah, because they need to celebrate the end of the practice period.
Yeah, so, looking at mine, the, the twenty-five dollars per module seems accurate, from what I've seen, so, that is one of my, one of my concerns, and my chance of labor, looks a little low, but it's not a very big field.
Mine was more of a recycling, the, um, the, the ten thousand, the ten thousand scrap value.
So, that's, that's scrap for the steel and, and the copper?
Yeah.
That's what that is, the recycling is for the copper, and so, that's what that ten thousand is, yeah, depends on, you know, copper will fluctuate, and steel will fluctuate, and still, eighty-eight dollars a ton, and, and two dollars a pound for copper, so it's about right, you know, for now, and I don't see that number going down in the future since commerce, yes, so, it's, you know, chances are, for future, that'll, those numbers will be higher.
Are you guys, so, are we, are we comfortable just, I mean, this is how we've been doing them all, um...
Well, will someone else look at this and say, this is the standard too?
Well, well, I, I think it should, well, in the future, if the board feel that this isn't, you know, maybe it should be re-reviewed, we can give the numbers of our findings to Graves', so when somebody comes to Mike, you know, says to be determined by, reviewed by Graves' engineer, if we decide that it's gonna be fifty dollars, or, you know, whatever it's gonna be to add up to the full amount, however, per mega water, however it's figured out, we get, tell Mike, this is the, uh, formula we want you to follow, so those numbers should add up to whatever it is.
This is our policy, this is, this is how much for a separate lot.
So, we need to get an idea of where he gets the, the numbers from, what is some of the back data that we don't get, just to make sure that that's got the latest data too.
So, it's only today, it's only just, I know it'll have another meeting in December, do we want to, can we do a conditional vote based on a little bit more research, or can just, can we vote for someone to have the authority to, to, to go ahead and okay this after the fact, this is checked, what is the, what is the logistics on this?
Look, for, for me, looking at these numbers, from what I understand now as a layperson, they, they look okay, uh, it's a relatively small field, compared to some of the other ones that we have.
I guess it's on, why it doesn't really...
And it doesn't sound like we're gonna do much about it anyway, so, the data that he has, the data that I see, he's going off the data that he has, so, and it, and it matches up with the data that I have, I don't know if we have grounds to increase it, or be able to do it anyways.
Yeah, and the way, I, you know, I don't, from a legal standpoint, I don't want somebody to challenge us, so it says, "Performance guarantee shall be reviewed except by the planning board, Eddie Doolin posted, planning board meeting."
Okay.
So, I don't know if you'd even sign a member to ultimately, ultimately sign on.
So, I, I mean, I guess my, my feeling, this is, let's just, let's, let's kind of, this is what, this is what we've been doing, this is what we've done.
I mean, I think your fear is the fear of the unknown in the future, so, it's, it's hard to condition a bond for the future, I mean, a bond is a finite price.
So, maybe we need to take, you know, as far as the bond goes, you know, increase the percentage of, of whatever costs are now, to cover in the future.
And do we have, do we have a contingency?
Or, or put that in there and say that, you know, contingencies are, are based on...
And other bonds, we have so much in here increased, do we, do we increase this bond?
This one is not now.
So, in thirty years when they take this down, is this what we're gonna have?
Uh, I think even some of these could look at every five years and, and adjust if, if needed, I mean, if we can have the data to, to show that these recycling costs have gone up, that we have reason to raise them.
If you propose that as one of our formal, well, we should look at our policies, and maybe that should be a policy, that every so many years, we look at these bonds, and we determine, and we actually condition with the fact that we, we look at them every so many years, and you'll have to agree to the increase, or...
Right, that's a very good idea.
Um, so that's a, that's a, you know, just to make sure we don't catch ourselves in that.
Thirty years is a long time.
Yes. I mean, or, it could be, or the materials could be worth tons of money, and, and we're...
On, go down?
Well, we can never use it, because they could pull it down themselves, and we'd never have to decommission, that's really just our safety net.
That's true.
And the biggest concern was that, and next year...
They take care of themselves, we don't have...
Which is always, but that's, there are a lot of points.
Yeah, the only saving grace right now, proving this one, is relatively speaking, a small facility, it's sitting on the ground, not, not in the ground, because it's on the ballot, the cement basis, so, God forbid the town ended up having to deal with this directly, this is a simpler one to deal with than most.
Any idea what the bond is on the corner of Richardson, from Richardson's corner, in that big field, can we know what that bond is?
Is that one, is increasing, where they are putting up on it?
So, that's what I'm thinking, that's what I'm thinking.
I can, I can look it up, I just don't know on time.
I, I don't know, I don't know those, the big, the big one that you could see from the, the corner there.
Yeah.
All I know is that I was looking, I was comparing this other towns, and we seen the terminal lot wicked, I was just, um, so, I don't know, maybe I need to look back over some of the data, and now, and Laurie will know, feel, know on top of her, like, she's, she knows this stuff, um, if there's specific towns, and how they got their estimates, like, how are they, how are they doing it, maybe that's the simple, cheap way to do it.
Well, that's where I was saying that Laurie might be helpful in that, because of all of her research, you might know, like, oh, I don't know, Auburn did this, you know, Brookfield did it, you know, where they might have actually taken an expert, and determined it, yeah.
And if they brought in an expert, and that's what they did, and maybe we can just use their data.
And she did mention what Brookfield for, as far as the batteries, there's, they had a whole portfolio.
Yeah, seems like they put a lot of time and effort into it, so they might be one of the towns that we can look at.
If we can reach out to them too, and see, I mean, where...
Especially if they're all gonna line up, to check out, so.
So, do we have a, a motion to accept this, the, well, first of all, we do the landscaping one first, or is that the easy one?
Yeah.
So, are we able to do it, Brandy, I hadn't said that, is that, I had a computer, like you said about, uh, a meeting, or do we...
Oh, no, we have to do it here at a planning board meeting, can't be termination by a member later.
So, it has to be noted by the...
Right.
I'll make a big screen, we have a few landscaping bond, Sea Tech Solar, seventy-three forty-four.
Second, definitely, Paul and Fanner.
Right.
For Sea Tech Solar.
Right, they didn't have a lot of landscaping there anyways, a couple of bushes and a couple of trees, I think.
Yeah, and they, some, the only thing that Mike had an issue with, and it was growing in, but it'll probably, grass is still a little thin around the panel, just because of, it's growing, but time of year, you know, now, yes, now, so.
Be the diesel in the ground.
Be the diesel in the tires, diesel in the tires, and the main flag, you know?
Yeah, yeah, there was a, there was a, um, monitoring well on that site too, if I remember, did that ever close, did we ever get, that was one of the conditions?
We asked for it to be closed, do we know, do you guys know if, um...
So, there was a monitoring well on that site too, that, that we requested proof of it being decommissioned, or had been...
Because of the toxicity.
Did that ever get done, I think that was one of the conditions, or should have been one of the conditions.
I don't know.
And I will say, the site looks a lot different than the pictures they showed us.
Well, they, they came in, actually, and it was kind of in a limbo time between Bill and I.
Yeah, yeah.
Where they did a modification, which, because I'm, I kind of said, how did that happen, and I found out the timing of what they, what they did, but, now you have a...
It's nicer than it was for everything.
It's bad when you say that, that the solar farm looks better than what it was.
Pretty shiny stuff, yeah. I just, I'm just curious if, if, you know, the, some of the, the conditions that we specified, are...
We can, we can condition, condition that.
Sure, this is just for the, the bond, but, yeah, this is some point we need to sign up on.
We'll just make sure, Brandy, can you just follow up on that to make sure that, that any other...
Oh, it says they have to him verify the status of the two wells, that the wells are re-weening, and I, I'll, if you want to avoid it, you might want to avoid it on the decommissioning bond, one, we get the small money, get a little more power, provided all, all other conditions of the planning board, full type of that, and then it's, you know, and that, that way you're covering all the bases, and it says they were supposed to take care of it, but it didn't say, in this...
They never showed, they never showed any proof of doing it, and I'm not sure, was it on Mike's?
No, was, and, uh, so I'm turning with the, uh, health department, that it's been done, because they should, they should get verification of that.
Sure, sure, I think at the time, nobody knew what the well was for, or, or was it test wet or something, from the spill from the building across the street, I think at the time, is what they said.
Alright, that's a, that's a great, that's, that's perfect, I think, we can condition that, Brandy, if they want their money, they're gonna satisfy all of our second conditions, so. Um, do, we find that we have, do we wanna make a motion to, um, approve this decommissioning bond, with the condition that all other conditions come through the mountain?
I'll, I'll give you the data, the, yeah. The day, the approval letter dated August twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, this is the letter we're obviously looking for, listed.
Okay.
We have plenty of time, too.
Yeah.
Two thousand and eighteen. So, the bond conditions listed in the letter of August twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen.
Sure. Is that the motion, second?
Aye.
Yeah, Kurt will need to sign off before he'll get them a strictly file, so...
Perfect, so we'll be...
Yeah, I'm currently need to sign off before he'll give them a strictly bar, so...
Perfect, so we'll all be...
Yeah.
Brookfield Road, do we have a Brookfield Road discussion?
What's that?
Brookfield Road discussion?
Which probably, I was gonna give you the status update, yeah.
You wanna, can we just, can we just skip, can we just do that?
Sure.
We were just gonna get a status update on the Brookfield Road and we'll, just so we all know what's going on.
Yeah, um, well, discussion is the, the planning board was waiting for clarification from Mark Bobrowski about the letter they gave, it's October twenty-third. About, he said that the subdivision was done correctly and it's approved and everything, and his question was, the site plan, is it gonna have to come back before the board was? And there was opinion of the board in reading the letter that they felt that they had to come back to the board. The applicant does not believe this, what the letter says, and more importantly, the attorney for the applicant does not agree with that. I have been hounding Mark Bobrowski, he does not answer it, he doesn't answer anything. He even called me today and talked to Kurt, but he still didn't talk to me about this. I can't get an answer from him. And I know they're chomping at the bit because they want to get a building permit and get started. And I even stressed the importance of this, that we were having the meeting tonight, but we won't have a meeting until, uh, January end. He just doesn't get back to me.
So, they submitted a site plan underneath the moratorium, during the moratorium?
Before.
Before the, before the town meeting that started the moratorium, it was May first and then the town meeting was whatever it was.
Okay.
And then, so it definitely...
That locks them into the zoning that was currently in effect back then. So, the changes that were made in the October, September, October town meeting?
So, the, so, the subdivision plan was submitted?
It was approved, I think, before the town meeting.
The subdivision?
Oh, I mean, the site...
The subdivision went on during the moratorium.
Because everybody else brought in their subdivision before the moratorium and they bought it during the moratorium. And then the question is, do, do, uh, do the site, do the zoning, because they haven't pulled a building permit yet. If they built a, pulled a building permit, they would have been locked in, but because they didn't, they were locked. So, we're saying that the lawyers are fighting over if they, if you submit something during moratorium, during moratorium, do you get the old zoning or the new zoning? The point is, everybody else and their brother bought it in before the new moratorium. And you get lawyers who are gonna try to fight it either way. And we don't want to spend any money going to court. We were hoping that we could just have a lawyer say they have to comply with the new zoning. They would have to tweak their site plan a little bit to comply with the new zoning.
So, had we changed the zoning and not done a moratorium, they would be, they would follow into the new rules? But because we did a moratorium and then waited a year, it doesn't seem right.
No, actually, no, if you, if they had got their approval before you changed the zoning, they would be... And you didn't have a moratorium, they would be governed by whatever rules they got their approval under. You couldn't make them, because you changed the zoning.
You can't submit anything during the moratorium because that's the point of a moratorium. And I'm not sure, just the guidance that we have, like our, what, what we should have done is not accepted anything during a moratorium.
So, how do we get Mark to, to, to answer that or, you know, is, how about...
They're, what they're stating too is during the moratorium, it says that nobody can, no building permits could be issued for a solar array.
Right.
For a market solar array. Didn't say that, um, somebody that was already approved, that their site plan is subject to change. It just said, somebody couldn't apply for, somebody couldn't receive a building permit. And that's what their lawyers hanging their hat on, that doesn't say that they couldn't have, their site plan approval was no good or anymore. Just said they couldn't get a building permit.
So, I, I don't understand why we can't get an answer from him. Is it, is it a money thing? Is it, do we owe him money or is he just, doesn't...
No, it's...
Do we find a...
I think he's too busy, you don't really wanna, I think he's got too much on his plate.
He kinda weighed in on it and said, no.
He originally said no, he said no on the video and then, um, we just need, what we need to do?
His letter was a little ambiguous, that's the problem.
It was lawyer writing, um, but we need, we need to do it the right way. So, um, I guess we just don't, I mean, we, let's not accept anything or do anything until we hear from Mark, but when we speed it up.
I even, I even told your attorney, if, if Mark turns around and says, "The site plan's good," I said, they, he, was he concerned, "The plan is good, make it before going to major plus?" I said, "No, the planning board's gonna go with whatever Mark says. If the site plan is good or they need to come back, whatever Mark determines needs to be done, that's what's gonna be done. You don't have to worry about the planning board saying, "Well, we don't agree with him." Whatever he says, that's what they gotta go with. We're just trying to get an answer from him.
I thought we were just tweaking the, because they were approved and they were bringing the plans in, it's like, well, your approval's, and we're just tweaking the site plan as...
Well, now the point is, do they have to, do they have to comply with the new zoning? Um, the setbacks, they'll have to tweak it a little bit, they'll have to change, modify their plan and it'll cost them money to do so. But the point of a moratorium is to freeze everything until the research is done, you get to where you need to be. Um, it seems, if you can sub, submitting things during the moratorium, it seems like the whole entire idea of having one is, is, is gone. Why even?
Well, they had a site plan approved before the moratorium, but what we're saying, site plan does not guarantee them...
But they didn't freeze, right. They didn't freeze their site plan because they should have pulled a permit, a building permit right after and they didn't, and that's...
There's a question, it's like, what actually gives you the zoning freeze is pulling a subdivision permit, which is why all these projects pull the subdivision permit. That's actually the guy...
Or a building permit.
Or, well, building permits are on their way, yeah, but...
And site plan only freezes you for, remind me, two years?
Two years.
And a subdivision freezes you for seven years, right? So, I mean, in reality, what, when did they pull the site, when was the site planned on from?
Well, actually, that was a whole nother thing because, um, they, they got approved, I think it was May first, two thousand and eighteen, that's when the site plan was approved. I mean, it's literally May first, two, but...
But isn't the site plan that freezes, the building permit that freezes it, really technically? So, it's like the weirdest, it's, but again, lawyers can make anything work. We just want our lawyer to tell us.
We need to...
Yeah, it's very frustrating because, I mean, they're waiting, which I can understand that and, you know, driving me crazy that...
Do we need this, to bring this in front of another council?
I mean, Lori, you know, if you're instead of, hey, Mark, you're bringing all the money to do the same research.
Especially since Mark, you said Mark wrote the letter.
Yes, we have, he had an opinion.
We're just looking for clarification, we're just looking for clarification of what he wrote. We seem to have a lot of this.
So, what, what, I mean, what is, what, excuse me, if you have a letter and they have a letter, do they want to go to court about it or do they...
Well, they said they're gonna go to court about it because they're getting tired of waiting and they, they disagree with the planning board. If Mark's gonna come back and say, no, they're good to go, then everything's gonna be fine. But they said they will go to court about it if Mark says that they're not fine. That's what their attorney said to me yesterday. I mean, I've been dealing with this for quite some time.
So, just let the court handle it and say, this is what it is?
And then we, and then they have a way to defend us and we'll be able to expire. Yeah, so, um...
I mean, even their attorney, they want to do it the nice way, we're just trying to, just trying to get an answer from Mark.
We just want, we want to do the right thing. We need to, we need to follow the rules. Um, it would be easy to say, let it go, but we, but we started down.
Sorry, did Mark have a full understanding of the question?
Yes, I mean, we gave him, Kane broke down all the dates of one, what was approved, planning, the moratorium, in fact, yeah, she gave him timelines, so that he had all the information.
It's like a, it's like a, this is what it is and that's...
So, give us, we will, um, follow up, Gina will follow up, right?
All we want to know is, do they need to follow the new regulations or the old regulations?
We both...
Give us the answer for that.
Um, we will, between both of us, we'll, um, reach out and just say, just finish it please so we can, so we, we don't have to go to court again.
I work a couple miles from his office, if you want me to go over there and hang with the car.
Yeah, it might be what it takes, I mean, uh...
I mean, I know his daughter's getting married, there's a lot, a child law, and so...
She got married.
Did you just get married? And then there's all, you know, he's working all over the state, he's, he's, he's a busy man, but we just...
It's very dynamic.
But we just want, um...
Should be a quick answer.
Say yes or no. Just get a yes or no.
So, we'll, and as soon as, and as soon as we hear from him, we will, maybe you'll proceed on however...
Right.
Because we don't need to do anything.
Right, well, I, I told them, because, I mean, uh, if, uh, Mark comes back and says, "The old site plan's good and they're good to go," we'll be able to get them going with building permits right away. If it says, see, site planning, then it'll be up to them to decide how they want to handle it.
I just don't want to set any precedent saying that, like, moratoriums don't count or anything. I wanted to do everything by the book.
See, that was my issue too, is like, and I, that's why I don't want to second guess Mark, it's like, why did all the other solar companies come in to do the subdivision prior to the moratorium so they could get the freeze? Why would they even bother to do that?
If they could do it during the moratorium.
Right, right, why would they, there had to be...
It's set upon the beginning, it was a very, very last minute.
So, that's where...
Site plan does not freeze the zoning, subdivision plan does, they did not file a subdivision plan prior to the, the moratorium.
Well, it's about the, so when I pull, when you pull a building permit, you're supposed to be in compliance with all of this zoning and, and it would, it's, it just complicated.
So, they didn't pull a burn, they didn't pull a, pull a building permit like they should have? So, now, they need to follow the new regulations, that's what I understand it.
That's what I agree, so, um, but we want it in my... So, let's, can we just...
This is on Brookfield Road.
This is on about the highway.
Yeah, seventy-five, you're...
Sure, bye.
Right on the hillside, the turf, left inside.
So, we'll let Mark, we'll let Mark follow up, um, hopefully, um, tomorrow. And we will just have them, you do what, proceed, proceed as...
Yeah, whatever Mark says, whatever direction he says to go, and then we'll go that way.
Are they worried about the deadlines, about timing right now?
Well, they, that's the second question, we lose next year.
So, when, if...
And the other, the second half of the questions they had actually, I haven't invested that in anyone yet.
Right, way in the back.
Is, is the moratorium in time grandfather, give them a break. So, the moratorium was for thirteen months or whatever. So, do they have thirteen months added on because they couldn't do anything during that period of time anyways to complete the project? Another legal question.
That's a very legal question, I think.
Yeah. Because obviously, they're not gonna be able to get it done by the deadline, by the two-year time.
And if, and if there is, and if there, and if, if there's a lot of money, like, on the line for the year end, you know, for the year or whatever, we want to work with them. We want them to get a year advantage that they can, they can get too.
And I explained to the attorney, the, the board is very understanding of good about giving extensions too. So, I mean, I said, the worst case scenario, if you'd ask for an extension, the board is very likely to give it to you. Particularly in your case where a moratorium is in effect and you couldn't do anything during that time, so...
Yes, we, because we're not trying to be, we, we just want to follow the rules and there's a lot of things going on with solar, very sensitive subject, um, you know, almost as sensitive as pot maybe, so, but we just make sure we follow the right, the rules the right way.
Well, that's, I just mean, that's why I don't want to take it upon myself to make this decision.
And if Mark says, "Good to go," I change my mind and we're all good, so then they can just proceed, you'll sign, you'll, you'll, and then if, and if not, they...
We want it in writing from our...
Yeah, oh, yes.
Well, I've been trying to do, like, responding, at least in an email, you know?
Right, right.
Something that, I don't want to do it with a phone call.
Can you bill us for that yet, right?
Yeah.
Can you bill us for that yet?
You bill for the letter? Yes.
Did we pay him?
Well, I think so. Well, I mean, I didn't think it was gonna be such a big deal, it's like, you know, just give me an answer, you know?
Yeah, it was, it was complicated, it was, you, you begged the first half, you're like, oh, and you read the tablet, like, oh! So, he just, they, they just, I'm not sure. Alright, so let's...
Am I allowed to speak in private?
You've been loving me.
I just, I mean, I read the letter too and it, I mean, I read it like ten times because it's very confusing. Um, but like in section two, he says that he concludes for the purpose of, of his opinion, that the zoning in effect for the Infinity proposal is, is what was in effect as of February twenty-first of nineteen, or twenty-fifth of preliminary subdivision. So, he says that he concludes that the zoning in effect for this project is that, that was in effect on February nineteenth, which was before the moratorium.
Now, February of nineteen was during the moratorium.
Right, so the zoning that was in effect then was what ended up in the old bylaw, because there was no new bylaw written yet. So, he's saying that, you know, and then in the second, in the third paragraph, um, he notes that on February twenty-first, the zoning in effect included the moratorium. However, the terms of the moratorium expired at the end of business of May of nineteen, which they had, had filed a preliminary subdivision before that. So, that's what locked them into the zoning that was in effect as of the moratorium, so...
So, the moratorium ended before we, the new regulations were, were in May, were they in...
No, it was June, remember it was the second meeting, it ran overtime.
Well, it was still the same meeting, still the same meeting.
Well, it was the same meeting, it was continued from May twenty-ninth or whatever the date was.
So, I mean, when I read, you know, after reading it multiple times, it seems that, as you get into the letter further, he's stating that zoning that's in effect of that time of filing preliminary subdivision is what should be gone by. And I, you know, I filed a lot of those preliminary plans myself with the other solar projects before the moratorium took place and...
So, what was the significance of filing those?
I think everybody was just nervous, I mean, we were nervous and some of the solar companies we were working for were nervous and they were just like, hurry up, hurry up and get it in. I don't know that they all did the homework, like...
If they were worried about it going more long-term or something?
I think they just didn't want any chances, you know, so like they would just get the preliminary in right away. Don't even, you know, don't hesitate. I, I wasn't working with Infinity at the time, so I don't know why they did not. But that's, you know, speaking with Todd, who's their attorney, he has a good way of explaining it, but the more I read that letter, it, to me, it makes sense that he's saying that the zoning that's in effect as the preliminary subdivision was filed is what should take place. So, I don't know how closely you've read the letter, but it seems, I had to read it quite a few times.
I just read that, but it's, it's...
The first paragraph, it seemed like he said no, like, just blatantly no, but then the further you read into it, I think he explained it a part.
No, I, I read the same page.
Uh, it was the October twenty-third of this year. I think he said, you know, in the first section, he says the short answer is no. But then as he goes on to explain it, it seems to make more sense. So, I don't know, they just asked me to come tonight so I could not speak, but just kind of get a little...
And if it is, and that's what he says and that's what we'll go with, but I don't like the idea that, um, a, a moratorium means nothing and maybe we need to tighten up our, tighten up what we do to make sure that we, uh, kind of...
Wasn't the moratorium just on building permits? Just, there was no more building permits that could be pulled? I think that's all the moratorium was.
I don't think you could bring anything in front of us either, I don't think you could...
Probably no new site plans, but I thought the moratorium was strictly just for no building permits until they could come up with some new regulations.
Well, no, because if they have an approved site plan, it'll be covered under the old regulations.
I mean, we saw, uh, through the moratorium, there's been some, like, different phases of projects, yeah.
And the plant, the site plan was approved before the moratorium even took place and the site plan took it for two years?
Yes.
Two years, so that would give them till May of twenty-twenty. So, it's not even expired even, you know, just kind of a two-year.
No, I think it was approved in eighteen, about nineteen, nineteen was...
Right, it was approved in May of eighteen, so...
So, it's only good till twenty, but it's hard to worry about the timing?
If it didn't work, it'd be good.
Yeah.
Still good, you know, till May of twenty-twenty. But, I mean, I agree, it would be nice to just get a yes or no answer, but no, three pages.
I mean, in, in, in reality, it's not any different than the, the old applications. The only thing I want to do is, is tweak the, um, the decommissioning bond and stuff.
I think the buffers are a lot, the buffer rate would make this project almost unbuilding less there. This is a small one, again, we have to shrink that down, it's, it's feasible for me to go forward.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
So, hopefully we'll get a final from, from Mark and, um, just to, either way, honestly, it, it's, I mean, it'll, it'll either go in with the old zoning or the new zoning. Let's just make sure that we have an attorney that says that we made the right decisions, so we're not gonna, we're not here guessing. No, we just want him to say, clarify.
Well, he just said, if it's, if it's with the new zoning, it'll be feasible because it will be...
Right, so I mean, financially, they probably got a lot invested in this already, so they're, it's an important question.
We don't want a court, a court battle, so let's... Um, when are they scheduled to bring in their, because is this, do we have put their... Um, when are they scheduled to bring in their, cause is this, do we approve their subdivision? What's going on with their subdivision?
No, their subdivision, the definitive, the preliminary, they're done with everything, I mean, technically, if we weren't having this conversation, they could already have a building permit. It's, um, it's, they've done everything except for, basically the holdup is they're waiting for a notice. Kirk is waiting for a notice to proceed from me to say they can, he can give them a building permit.
Alright, so, um, let's, can you, just for Mark, can you just ask him for a verbal and then a letter to follow? Say, what do we need to, what do we need to do? And if Mark says yes, then we don't, it, it might take him two weeks to do a letter? If he says verbal, to keep-
As long as somebody hears it besides me, I'm here.
Yeah, that's right, and then, you know, and then, and that way they're, and that way it, we've, we've done everything we can, you know what I'm saying? Then Mark can follow up the letter, um, it'll protect us, and either way, does that make sense? Say, Mark, yes or no? Like, can they, should, you know, do we let them do it or, or don't, like legally, should they, are they, are they frozen or not?
Was this infinity? Did he refer to it as infinity?
Infinity solar seventy-five Brookfield Road. And it, it was, I even told him, his letter dated October twenty-third, thousand nineteen, so.
Yeah, I'm referring to the same thing, okay. We just want clarification, good to go or not, and then, I hope, maybe he'll get back to you during this meeting right now. You're right.
Yeah, maybe he just doesn't like me, I don't know.
He likes seeing you a lot. And then, and then maybe we'll be able to just, tomorrow, we'll be able to say, go for it, you're good to go, that way it'll-
I mean, I did read this letter too, and it's, that's the problem, it's like, you read over here, and it's a definite no, you read over here, and it's kind of saying, well, you know, he can, so pick one, you know?
Right, no, exact, and I think a lot of legal stuff is, is like-
And the problem is too, is we want to make sure whichever direction we go, we're doing it right, if, if there's ever issue with neighbors, something saying, hey, we shouldn't have done-
We want to, we want to be heard, it was like legally, this is what we did, exactly what we were supposed to do legally.
That is a sensitive area over there.
Very sensitive. Um, alright, sorry, I wanted to, I know that he's waiting.
Everything in this town is sensitive.
In general, it's in the water.
It's sensitive people.
Everybody needs sensitivity training.
You should all wear sweaters like Jean.
Group hug, group hug.
Wear my cat sweater next week.
Everybody wants sidewalks though, we used to put some sidewalks in and we'll be well loved.
Oh, sidewalks, yes.
Oh, what about Trader Joe's?
Oh, there was something, oh, is it, bad, bad fruits.
Yeah, that's right.
We still want them, not gonna get into Trader Joe's, we still want you, um, cause you know they watch our meetings probably. Everyone sidewalks up Dresser Hill and down to the schools, that's what we, then we'll be here. The, uh, planning director, EDC director position, um, we, I know we talked about it, the selectmen have been overwhelmed with the idea of bringing the new TA, and they have a lot going on, but I know that, that we do need to discuss the, the idea of, of, um, Mandy, and he's willing, not forcing.
Yeah, it seems like the selectmen, and I can understand their position, they really want to get the new TA on board, so that that person has input on this whole thing, so that they kind of, waiting until they make that move.
Are they voting tonight, so, twenty?
They, they plan on voting tonight.
Everybody seems to think they are, yeah.
Oh, let's pull them out, we'll, we'll vote, definitely go over there, let's pull them right in.
Yeah, actually, the last one was that they draw.
We're not on the agenda of that, that would fly.
Well, we can, if the new TA gets appointed tonight, we can bring the new TA in, under, um, other business, under the time posting.
I like your thought process, but I'm not sure he'll be an employee by that point.
Yeah, yeah.
Be twenty-four seven, that's the position.
You have voted in thirty seconds ago, come on!
Before he signs his contract.
Yeah, it's not scary, alright, um. So, so you did talk to Sab, uh, Sabrina Webb and, and, and I know other EDC members, uh, looking.
So that's one EDC member.
Well, I mean, I even talked to a couple, it seems like everybody supports the idea, they just kind of want to wait for-
It really did work well when Alan was doing it, it, it-
It's the right way to do it, and, and we argued that fact in the beginning, so it was straight line, you know?
You know, if, if we're, if we're all gonna work together as a whole, and this, it, it, it just makes perfect sense, it save, it does save money, and the, it brings the efficiency way up, I mean, having these meetings, inviting people, and, um, being the, uh, the welcoming and the, the person, the team that's pursuing, let's pursue people that fit in what we're pursuing for, right, so it just, it just makes sense. Um, and as soon as they're ready, we'll be ready, we'll go meet with them.
Sure.
Um, FYI-
Do we want to, how far are we gonna get into discussions with them? Um, at that time, are we meeting with the board of selectmen or are we just meeting with the new TA?
I think that it would probably be, be, be meeting with the new TA first and then the board of selectmen, cause it would be great if the new TA went in and presented for us and-
Okay.
And made, made the recommendation, or?
Should we go, um, speak about salaries at the same time, or?
I mean, we had a, a potential amount in everything already, and so-
Right, we did. That would be presented at the same time?
Yeah, I think so, I could get it done, it, I mean, it, it shouldn't be a huge, big deal. Um, it just, it just bringing back something that already, that we already had, and it worked.
Right.
Um, so we have a twenty-twenty budget, and I don't, I don't know if everybody had a chance to take a look at that. The only, the, the only change would be, it would be like the increase because of the EDC position, that anyone would take on, so that was, that was the, the change. And then we're asking for an increase in stipends and whether, whether they'll, um, give us that or not, and, you know, but I think we aren't.
Does you notice what everybody else makes?
Right, and everybody has seen, I mean, I've been, um, well criticized by posting all these stipends and asking for it online. I'm just saying very transparent, I am like the, the, um, the queen of transparency, um, about what everybody else was making, and when I, when we really look at the hours that everybody met, we really do meet quite often and for quite long.
Right.
Um, and the, I mean, the other things, we are so involved, we have Alicia, who's really involved with EDC, and, um, Jean, that goes out and, and does the CMRPC stuff, amongst other things, sits on the marijuana advisory, is that what the marijuana advisory?
Yeah, sorry, you can run that one too, yeah.
Uh, you know, so we, we do really represent, um, it's, it's nice to kind of feel appreciated after all of us can survive without the small increase, but it's-
But it shows appreciation by the town, and I'm not allowed, I don't know, it looks like we're brown nosing to the people in the room, I mean, the planning board probably puts in more time and effort than most board commissioners do.
And we want to make it so, I mean, being on any board in town should be a little attractive, there must be, I mean, not that anybody will do it for the money, I mean, obviously it's the time you put in, but it just, it just shows that-
Nobody's beating down our door to be done, to be on this phone though.
Yeah, we don't really have, I mean, mostly, mostly his positions run, you know, on, you know, unopposed, and, and it's interesting, like, you go to the city of Worcester and a selectman makes like, is it fifteen thousand dollars? Not a selectman, a, like, a school council, a school, a city, a school, a school committee member, fifteen grand or something. I mean, not that we're at the level of Worcester, but, but still, on the days of, uh, the, the-
Sure.
We'll ask, and if you don't agree, we don't get it, um, can always make a motion at town meetings, could be interesting.
We need a motion to-
So we need a motion to submit this?
Yeah, it's submitted, it's submitted.
Do we-
Yes, we have to do it.
Does anybody, does anybody not agree with either one of these items? So obviously, it, it would be changed if the, if they, if they went in a different route for EDC or something, or, um, if they decided, but just, we will be submitting this to the finance committee.
Correct.
And then-
Maybe by the end of the month.
And, uh, hopefully, um, one or two or a few of us can go when, when they're discussing this to, to kind of plead our case to them.
My concern is this, oh, okay, we're going to use this as the, um, planning board, EDC director, that's what, and that gets the bill for-
Yes.
Yeah, and that's what that is, so, yep.
Okay. So if they combine it, that's the sound?
And they have that on, they already have that on their budget, so they have that on their budget, they would just really need to move the money over. It's, it's, the money exists, in fact, more than what we need.
Yeah, that's the one that was allocated.
It was ninety-eight, I thought, or something, closer to ninety-eight, it was.
So, so it's, so do we have a motion to submit this budget?
I make a motion, we submit the budget as printed here for the town's approval, or finance committee and selectmen's approval.
I'll second.
Okay, there?
Oh, now comes the fun one.
Let's discuss the legal deal, as I'm trying to be an attorney.
So, the, the money that was approved was the last town meeting for the various legal and, um, professional expenses. The board of selectmen is going to collect that money, so could any board commission or anybody need any money for legal or the professional costs? We have to go to the board of selectmen and ask for it. In this period of time, we have over fifty thousand dollars from Merrick and O'Connell in three months. And the question is, they're asking us, well, what, they want them to give an estimate, the finance board wants an estimate of what you think the grand total is going to be.
We have no idea.
I don't like, well, based on fifty thousand dollars over three months, I, you know, it's the subdivision application, the, um, appeal one's been, uh, you know, minor, that Mark's doing, because it's already done, and it's, it's a minimal amount of money, what was it? Was that the one that was twelve hundred? No, no, that was, that was-
No, we just have a small one, six hundred.
But, yeah, but, for him filing the appeal, and that's all we're gonna see for quite some time. But it's, I mean, based on what it was going with EDC, it's very hard to anticipate what it is, but, um, they would like us to reach out to David McKay and ask him, what does he think it's going to be, I mean-
I think that's a fair question, we're throwing a lot of money at this.
Yeah.
He sat, he sat there at the board of selectmen meeting and went through those numbers, so this isn't new information, but I understand why they want it.
So can we just, can we, can you just reach out to him and have him come up with a, 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 I know it can't be an exact estimate, um, but we all sat in that executive session and, and saw how did, how that went, and it, and, and that's the choice that was made in that room, to do this.
At, at this point, he should know what he's up against and, and what his estimates are, otherwise, I, I think he's just- Yeah, I think he's just, he's just playing along and, and getting paid, and, you know, I, I, you know, I, he's a nice guy, but I think he's even said that the chances are minimal of actually winning something here, and if we do win it, it'll just probably come back to, this is, this is, I, I haven't seen anything. I haven't been informed of, of anything since the executive meeting, and, and that's it, so.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't receive anything either, so.
So, I think we've given, we've given him a lot of money with, with, as far as I'm concerned, like, no results, we don't know, we don't know where we're at.
And on top of that, and on top of that, we're also paying Silverstein to do the opposite. So we're paying, the town's paying Silverstein to go in one direction and McKay to do in the, go in the other, and so it's definitely an interesting, an interesting, um, process that we're going through, and-
So whether we win or lose, we're gonna win on one side and lose on the other side, and the town's paying both ends.
And chances are, if we win, it's probably just gonna come back for, for subdivision modifications anyway, so it's gonna come in front of us again, and they're gonna get a chance to, to make things right.
The only thing I can say, and, um, McKay's bill was probably a little bit high, because that included a lot of the consultancy used, I'm sure.
Yes, uh-
And you won't have that expense going down the line.
Yeah, and the consultants were separately approved, but with, with a different line item. I went specifically-
We, I, they're sitting on my desk, cause they, they have, every bill has to go to the board of selectmen.
So I had gone directly to the finance committee to ask for different money from the consultants, so they're getting paid out of a different account? They're not really part of the, I mean, I guess they're part of the total, but-
So we need an update of where we're at.
Well, that's to mean that fifty thousand does not include the assault, if you want to include the consultants, probably another ten grand.
Okay, so, so we kind of need an update of-
Well, the fifty does not include.
Huh?
The fifty does not include.
No, it's just Merrick and O'Connell.
Okay, but he did, he got the information from the consultants and he was compiling that.
Oh, yes, and also there was the whole issue with the, um, well, we're on camera, but some of the issues that was brought up in the executive session-
Yep.
That had to be dealt with by both attorneys, that obviously time and effort-
Right.
Um, had to be dealt with.
So I think just in accounting of, of what we've spent so far, and what that's for, and-
But, I mean, he spells out the hourly rating of where the money's going and everything, he's very good about that.
An estimate of, of how much more he thinks it's gonna cost and, and what that's for, so that we can look at the big picture and, and decide.
So when we have that number from him, we'll have to go before the board of selectmen and ask for the funds, whatever that number may be. Cause they have that three hundred thousand dollars allocated that was approved at the town meeting, and-
Maybe we need to also sit for another executive and look at-
I think an executive session is probably warranted.
And look at, oh, look at strategy again, um, said, this compromise that was tried to be, that tried to be made, and-
Well, you know, actually, it might be good to have one, not that I want to make it a long reading, but the peoniorating, cause at that point also is the LNG, um, citing council hearings, we'll go over, and we'll have an idea of where we're at.
Let's try to do that in January, yeah, maybe put an executive session at the end of it, so we can talk-
Maybe put an executive, maybe see if LNG committee wants to come to, to that, to offer a piece of that, no? Yes, maybe?
Well, I mean, yeah, cause it affects everybody, whatever's going on, so.
At least bring, at least bring in Frank.
Yep.
And see, yeah.
Let's put that on the agenda.
Yeah, let's, let's kind of coordinate and see if they wanna do, even if we, we make it backward or something, so they can kind of come in and go out, we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Actually, speaking of that, um, now we're, I don't know, we're, are we gonna do other business? This, this segue is rated.
Okay, yeah, sounds good to me.
Um, well, first, I just want to bring up this, I've been requested by the siding board to go testify on Monday.
Yay, Randy!
Myself, Frank, and, uh, Dan, uh, Dan, Dennis, Dennis Carlson from the fire department.
Fire department.
So we have to go testify on Monday at siding board, the night.
The night, okay, in Boston?
Yes.
Okay.
Exciting.
Yeah, we'll see.
And we have everything that we need to, to, to do that at this point?
Yes, well, I mean, and the replies and everything, um, I, I cited a lot of information in the bylaws on things that, you know, by giving these zoning exemptions, opens up bigger can of worms, like, for instance, one that they didn't even address is one of the, the, um, pipelines go through a floodplain. The ZVA is the official, um, body that approves anything in a sub, a floodplain. The ZVA is also in charge of contacting FEMA and letting know when new construction happens in the floodplain. If they never have to go to ZVA, a gas bag just goes through a floodplain, and nobody's gonna know about it until Dr. Bay, something bad happens, cause, you know, if you go, it's not that it can't be put there, it has to be done properly, and then FEMA has to know about it, because if it's in a floodplain, they're supposed to have flood insurance, and, I mean, it just keeps going, you know, so it's, it's, the whole thing about the zoning isn't just about, you know, too close to a setback, the height of the structure, you know, it's a bigger can of worms, and I guess I gave in too much information, so now I have to testify.
Do, do you have to have your remarks written all out before, is that how that, that process goes?
Well, we've submitted, uh, we've submitted, yeah, information to the siding board, you know, I had to do a write-up, Frank did.
And now they want to ask follow-up questions, so.
Right, based on the information that was used to the siding board.
Do we have any indication of which way it's going or which way they're leaning, or?
I've, I mean, everybody's like, has no idea, but I get, cause we're getting responses, everything is coming back, and if you read through everything, they have, from what I'm reading-
This is all public information, this isn't-
Yeah, this, yeah, it's all, it's all out there, it's not, yeah, it's all public, on the DPU website, uh, that they seem very concerned, like, how are you gonna make this happen on the one sixty-nine site, and they keep referring to the twenty site. The only thing I see that has been a negative for the whole thing, which, you know- The only thing I see that has been a negative for the whole thing, which, you know, 'cause they're saying like, do this project at the lowest possible cost, there's no question they can do it cheaper at one sixty-nine than they can on Route twenty, that's the only but that doesn't, I mean, they're taking everything into account, safety and things like that, and Amy hasn't had a chance yet to start doing her, you know, questioning and everything, you know, from
Questioning what?
Professionals here at the town level and everything, they keep whitewashing, like, you know, you're building this thing where they, actually, they changed their site plan. Now they got this big blank wall, so if that thing ever blows, it's gonna blow towards the road, I mean, 'cause now there's gonna be a wall there, so now it's even worse, you know, in their eyes, so
I'm sure, sure, that two hundred million gallon tank won't affect that wall at all, right?
They, and they, yeah, but now they're in the middle, they've been changing their site plans. And their site plan still was, this, this hasn't been brought up, and I don't, because I don't think the siding board's looking at that, but the town is looking at that. There's a property that they keep including as part of their project that they don't own, and the people said they're not American tool, they haven't sold to them, and I know if they got their approval, they came
They got the right price.
Like, you know, everything, everybody's got a price, but the point is, they don't have any documentation that says they have, you know
Any rights.
Any rights to purchase it, and their project encompasses that property, without that property, it affects what they want to do, so that's something that hasn't been addressed yet. Because the siding board's not really looking at this, it's just kind of like, I mean, the assumption, okay, you're buying this, right? You know?
So although, it, you know, the, the initial thought was that there's no way we even have any say in this, it, when you look at the, the, the tr, the types of questioning, the siding board, it's actually impressive how, how detailed and how thoughtful their questions are, like
Yeah, I, I actually very impressed.
No, it's a business, they
Not just technical, it's very technical, but also kind of like common sense stuff, like, so, um
Maybe by all the information they've gotten from other people here in town, it maybe inspired them to look at this a little closer.
And they certainly
If nothing was ever made of it.
Lots of people reached out and shared, and so I think that, um, and I don't know if we'll get it completely right, or if, I'm not sure what winning even means, it's not like, we're not, well, we don't want the project, it's just we want it to be safe, so it, um, Randy has done, I mean, just, um, to jump in to this, that was a big jump, it it's actually pretty impressive how, um, how well it's going on our side.
It's actually, one of the things they've done in the middle of this process, which I believe Amy's going to address it, but it hasn't been her turn yet, I guess, wanna say it that way, is now all of a sudden, they're showing, oh, maybe trucks will turn right on Route twenty, you know, maybe trucks will come from the Auburn direction of Route twenty, you know? Yeah.
So go through
So now they're asking, but they opened up the can of worms, and now the, the siding board is asking, well, okay, now we want traffic information for that, you know, but that's not what they told us, you know, oh, no, everything will come from
They've told us a lot of things, like
Right, well, that's, so, you know, trying to keep track of things.
It is?
Yep.
So, Mark?
Mark Babrowski just called.
Hello?
That's awesome.
Come on, speak.
Yeah, hold on, okay? Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm calling, hold on. Randy?
It couldn't have been better.
A yes or no answer, let's go. Does he see us on TV?
Um, while we're, while he's chatting
Hello?
Can we, can we extend?
Hello?
Um
Hello?
Thank you so much for your call today, eleven six, Worcester Road site plan approval aspiring in January. Um, they're asking for an extension?
No.
To January first, two thousand and twenty-one, that's the One six Worcester Road site plan.
What's Yankee Castle, where's that? Which branch do you think?
That's where the diner is.
Oh, okay, okay.
No, it's not the battery.
Do you have a site plan?
It's a seven
How old is that site plan?
Oak Hill Road where they had gotten the
Do we wanna review that site plan again, I mean, it's
Site plan approval before the war.
It's three up and it's, it hasn't expired.
The one that you wrote your August twenty-third letter about.
It's one of those things where it's been there for so long, things have changed, do we
So the question is
Which one are we doing?
They're trying to get
It's two, green gold, green gold and Yankee Castle.
The board was trying to understand your letter.
Oh, yeah, I heard the wrong one, so that one's sixteen Worcester Road, so let's step, step, take a step back, so first I said four, six Worcester Road, that's agreeing with one, um, they just want it to be January thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, as we discussed, I think it's the most prudent course of action to go with the extension, while I don't expect us to make any changes to the appro, approved plan, I'd like to preserve that flexibility, um
No, but we adopt new regulations that are completely
They gotta come back before us for, um, not an open retail.
Their site plan has no retail, so they're all set to, well, they are open, right?
They are open.
They could do something with parking or something.
Be careful on that, 'cause he hasn't, he talked to Randy a couple months ago, and then he never came back in here, and he's talking to, um, Board of Health
No, 'cause that was the question that we're, we're asking all along, that's what he's
My feeling from him, he assumes that he's just gonna come and do retail.
No. Well, that, that site plan, they, that, they, they don't have zoning protection for that second lot, they got a zoning, you know, that, that zoning's changed, they didn't
Right, and
That, that, that building, that's three different lots there, they had a site plan for three different lots, a site plan does not lock zoning. The building permit on that one lot that they had, they never combined those three lots into one.
No, no.
Then, those are three different lots, so those other two lots that they have, in my opinion, have to follow the new zoning, and marijuana's not permitted there, and you can't have parking for a business that doesn't have the proper zoning, so
And they never got their retail license, so
Right.
So they
We never approved them for
We never approved the retail.
We clearly said no retail, so let's, you wanna hold off on this one?
I think we need to hold off on that one, um, we've got to, so, so that's another thing that we're gonna have to get clarification from, from council on, it's, in my opinion, those other two lots do not fall under the same zoning that has that business there already, that business has changed. So we can't prevent them from doing retail, but they certainly, if, if they had enough parking
They can present them from
Um, I don't think, according to the C C C, that we can prevent something go, from changing from, from medical to retail, I think that's part of the C C C regulations that says they have to do this, but that lot does not support retail, so they could be denied on, on that, that reason alone.
Just looking zoning, we have nothing to do with marijuana, we have only to do only, only zoning.
It's just that, sure, that approved lot cannot handle the business for a, a retail operation of that size, or, from what I've seen so far.
So we're going to do a little more research on this green gold one before we, before we take any votes, I don't know votes, and we just the, it just, a little bit, um, confusing how, you know, we get, keep on getting feedback from other parts of this, that they don't need to come back for retail, and I'm sure they need to come back for retail.
Well, I've talked to Jim McMahon, Jim, uh, Philbrook from the Health Director, has talked to him, he is very much aware that he has to come back.
Right, but I think, I still think he's gonna try to skirt the issue.
So let's, let's
I wouldn't disagree with that, but
Let's take a look, a little deeper look at the zoning and the lots, and come up with a kind of a, a, a discussion list, and I don't know if we need to, again
You were in here when we were talking about, so that, that site plan included three different lots, but they never combined those lots into one. So they've got, you know, the, according to C C C, we can't prevent a, a
On medical.
Medical from going retail, that's part of the regulation, so if they are medical and they have enough property to run retail, that's kind of a done deal for them, and that's what he thinks. His consideration is he's gonna use lot two and three, or lot three, let's say they're built on one.
Right.
They're gonna use lot three for parking for the business on, on one, well, lot three is not, needs to follow the new zoning regulations, which doesn't allow
Well, lot three has a building, so it already has that, 'cause I know people
Lot three has a building.
But it has a building on it, so you have to provide parking for that building, so you can't say parking
For that building, right.
You can't say you got parking for two different places, it's like, well, this building needs five, you can't do those five.
And just take a step back, we have no, Cannabis Control Commission has no authority over the planning board, and we, we only look at zoning, we, and, and
And what I'm saying is the building, the building in, in lot two does not fall under the same, the same regulations, I, I, I don't believe, unless somebody can show me that that was part
The use was different.
The ri, the use was different. You know, they never planned for building two to be, uh, uh, either
That
Medical retail or, or adult retail.
Need a very detailed discussion about the parking situation and on
That's a sticky situation, we're gonna need some, some
Some guidance, we're gonna need some guidance on, does temporary parking, can you use a non-allowed use in temporary parking by using one of the that, that new temporary parking permit thing that we, that, that we have now, you know, they have a temporary parking
The second half, yeah.
Which falls underneath the, the, the building.
The recreation, the commissioner, and, so, but can we approve a plan that have, allows non-conforming, forming park, we, this, we definitely gonna need a, some legal counsel.
My understanding is you can't use a non-conforming lot as parking for, for, you can't use for parking for a business that's not conform to that zone.
And so whatever the parking is for is what, whatever they use for the parking, even though it's different zone, like
Because
And I found case law that actually, like, supports that decision, so again
We have no public parking.
We don't, we don't have public car.
So that's definitely going to require, said, we don't wanna, after the fact, deal with any legal, if upfront
Let's find out.
If we spend money upfront to make sure that we're going down the right direction, again, all I care about is, is zoning, and I wanna make the right zoning decisions. Um, now, let's just do Yankee Crossing, and then we'll get back to more. Um, so this Yankee Crossing, um, on sixteen Worcester Road is looking for a twelve-month extension, um, t, t, um, until January twenty, twenty twenty-one. Um, that site, the conversation was this site plan has been around for a bajillion years, like, how many years? Yeah, is that Steve from
So
Yeah, it is.
It would be good to know how long that site, I mean, we've had a site, let's, let's say ten, fifteen years, we've had a site plan and no construction has happened. Is it worth keeping that site plan, or do we say, hey, no, listen, we need to know what's going in there?
If the zoning changes or whatever.
Sure.
Is it, is it really that, oh, I'm not familiar with this project.
I've never seen, I've never not, not approved an extension at all, thank.
Neither have I, but he, that's, oh, that, he was gonna do the drive-in bank window and the thing and all that, that was
Long time.
Whoa, yeah.
So, so
That's not short-term memory, that's where I remembered it.
The one they're remodeling right now?
The diner, yes.
Are they rebuilding that now?
The diner, they're completely redoing it.
They, they gutted it, they put a new roof on it.
They can't be doing the same thing that they were doing before.
What are they?
A drive-in, weren't they gonna
So the
No, 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 they're redoing the
The diner that's, that was there.
So the construction that they're doing to this property now, does it follow the site plan that they have approved for there?
No, no.
Then why do we need to, to renew it?
Yeah, and my, honestly, is, if the, if that's the case, and they're remodeling that diner, they obviously have no intention to, I mean, they're putting a bunch of money, which I think is crazy, but they're putting a bunch of money into that building.
Right.
So the site plan
They're obviously not planning to build anything else anytime soon.
Well, we need a place to eat, so we'll always go there.
You know, I, I, I'm all for having, having something there, but they need to come back with, with
Can, can you invite them?
Better idea of what's going on, it'd be nice if you, sure.
Yeah, sure.
I think they need to explain what they're planning on building in a way that's in, in the site plan that they've got approved for that location.
Um, if they can't come in in January, then we can always give like a thirty-day extension or something, like a thirty-day, just to make it so
Well, they've submitted their letter in time, so they're covered.
Also, okay.
Submitted before it expires, it's already covered.
Yep, so we don't need to decide, decide by that point.
Yeah, it's a matter of them submitting before the term runs out.
Okay, well, let's get a minute to talk to them, try to find out.
Hey, how about that, Stu, I refuse both of them.
Maybe you can make a time limit, or make a bylaw, like, site plan's only good for
Well, it is, it's only, the site plan's only good for two years.
Two years, and then you have
So we, we extend them because of circumstances, but maybe we need to be a little more strict, but we don't ever want a contractor because of a crime or some
If they're working on, on the plan, that's, that's understandable, but if they, if they're not working on it, and they have no intentions to work on it, then
What they're doing now has nothing to do with that site plan that we have.
That's my point.
Has nothing to do with it.
But it does keep value on the property.
Exactly, sure.
That's all it's doing, so financially, it's something I don't know.
It also, it also creates zoning.
And, and things have changed, that whole, that whole location has changed, so what's approved for that site plan may not work with, with what's in there right now.
There's gonna be a little strip mall and a baked path.
Right, right.
So what's
And what's It's tiered, it was tiered because of the, the statography, yeah.
So what's approved for that may not work with our, our new situation, so it would be good to look at it.
And we're redoing all of our zoning, and, and it may be actually get to their, you know, to their advantage to not, so, right, perfect. Okay, what happened on the phone? What happened on the phone?
Mark says that he was never asked the information about whether this was approved under the old zoning, he goes, that's not the question I said. I know it's the question I asked, you know, gain provide the time, now he need, so he basically says, no, you never asked me that, it's whether they, um,
Cause when he answered, he answered about
We all know a moratorium doesn't affect them, it's over, you know, hon, honestly, I think he would be backpedaling if you want my opinion. Now he wants me to send him the old regulations, the new regulations, and all the time with this, the information we gave him months ago.
Okay, so let's do that.
Basically, he has not looked at it.
Okay, let's do that, and, and
But I, I, I mean, it is, honestly, this is very unfair to the applicant.
Sure.
We're starting back from zero one, we paid him money to do this, and now we gotta pay him again to do the same thing.
Okay, do we have the, the original letter that we sent him with the information?
Also send, also sent him the original letter.
I did. Oh, you mean money information? Oh, I take, 'cause I mean, I was
Yeah, send, when, when you, when you send what he needs, send your, the original letter that he sent us, and 'cause it seemed to make sense with all of that, like, this particular plan, and I don't think it had anything to do with batteries, right?
No, no, that's when
That's the first thing he brought up, I'm like, no, we're not talking about that.
Well, that's what I thought, because he answered me in saying, um, required a modification for large batteries.
That was a different, that was a different question.
Right, well, it's, he's just confused.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so, so he may have had something else on his mind when he answered the question and not fully read the question, and, and just assumed it was a different one, so
I know, he wrote a two-page letter.
Make a copy of that same letter, put in all the things, and
Well, I even, when I, um, before, I think I sent it to, his own letter back to him twice, now, so so he knew exactly what we were talking about.
Okay.
Can, can you send that letter to us to just, uh, you may
The letter from him?
The letter that you sent to him.
Okay.
His original
Just, just in case it, it, it's confusing to us, and, just, just to pick any set of eyes.
And the one that you sent back.
If I didn't fell at our present, I'd be happy to be the first one to say that.
So we're all on the same page, thank you.
Oh.
Oh?
This is not on the
Yes, it is.
One more item, we got two R F Ps, I presume.
Okay.
Oh, look at this. It might
Well, so we have, so do we have, so we can review them and then talk about this next meeting?
Okay, so this is other business.
Other business, R F Ps.
I made a comment for all of, everybody to take one with them, so you can have a little light reading.
Yeah, we were gonna get a
Yeah, okay. Gonna get, have an estimate.
Indication of Sir?
Who, um, who, who gave us proposals?
Uh, Mark Babrowski and C M R F C.
So is this, um, the only two that we've received, or?
This is the only two that we've received so far.
Okay, and how long do they have to submit these?
Friday.
This Friday?
Yeah.
Okay, so, chances are we may only have two?
Yeah.
Good.
Want to take it home with you before Got to get coffee, we should do, so
Okay, I'll get it tomorrow.
Yes.
There he is. I just got in the same picture.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying.
It's interesting that the anticipated contract price shall not exceed 50,000.
You don't get it if you don't ask.
But you know that, you know that, um, Bill Scanlon did an estimate on what this would cost?
Yes.
And it was 100,000.
Right.
So, um.
Either one was, the highest one was half that much.
So they just, they didn't, so they looked at our town budget to see what was approved for the budget, and they didn't realize that there's only half of the total. So that's good to go. No, really.
They did some homework, right?
At least gonna get some tall chairs now, yeah.
Well, how can they see? How can you say that?
Well, they can't exceed that, but they're saying that that's, they, they say that, they say that you have to do a front of 50, they're saying they can do it for that amount.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what they're estimating based on.
What did they also say?
The request of what we want them to do, that's what the narrative is.
Look at, yeah, I think we need to look at what they say they're gonna do, and compare what they say they're gonna do, and kinda, yeah.
Exactly.
Cause you know that they're not gonna do one thing more than what's on here.
Mm-hmm.
Without, without paying more.
Well, it's hard with two, it's like, whether you can have, like, a two-minute conversation without tossing one or read a quick email, I don't know how.
I don't know what they, it doesn't say what the hourly, we just know that. We can calculate it out, though, cause they both have the amount of hours it's gonna.
Yeah, so I think it'd be good to, now, we've got this information, it'd be good to kinda compare those, and we can make the recommendation, thank you.
That's homework.
So on, so on this one, note that the, the zoning, all the, the, the actual map is included.
Right, and there.
And on this one, it says.
Subcontracted.
Mapping not work, not to exceed 10,000.
Right.
So if it goes over, then it would go over.
That's what I was saying, because I knew CM RPC would do their own mapping.
I know they have the technology, they probably already have it, take a look. All right, I'm, I, I mean, two very detailed, strong proposals, we'll, um.
Who, who maintains the, the, the online version of our map, the Mooney Mapper tool, is that done by the town, is that?
I thought it was, was it, is it on top?
The zoning map?
Yeah, the online zoning, zoning map, I don't know if you've looked at that, the Mooney Mapper tool, you can get it on, online, and, and look at the zoning, and turn on different layers.
The zoning.
I mean, like, that brand stuff. I can never, okay.
I can never get it to work correctly, so that's, that's what the point I'm making, is, 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 it's broken.
Well, even to look up your own properties or something, it tells you, you know, go in here and check your, I can never get it.
It never works, yeah, so, it, that used to work, I remember at some point, looking at that, and it did work.
Well, we had a lot of technology changes going on, so maybe it was something that just wasn't flipped over, too.
Sure. That's what I was asking, is that under our responsibility, is that, is that something maybe does, or is that something?
Problem is, they, they had a contractor doing it before, and now they.
And it's fallen off.
Put things on all the town employees, but the problem is.
Somebody broke.
We don't even, well, they don't even know what we're supposed to be doing on, you know, they, well, anyway, it's, that's your part, we don't know that, you know? Nobody's really gone over, with the different departments on, who's in charge of what.
Okay.
Right, cause, well, before you really.
So I know the zoning overlays don't work.
Quick touch the websites, it all had to go through LESA.
Right.
And that had to go through the department, and that had to work for the permission to do it, and now, the last thing I've not heard is that they want each individual department to take care of their own thing.
Cause I know the tax information is there.
Is it, okay.
A lot of information you can get, the ownership is there, whether it's up to date, I don't know, but it's the zoning part of it that, that doesn't seem to be working.
Oh, is that the one where it says this is under, um, construction?
No, it just doesn't, just, just doesn't.
You know, we, we had major problems with the turning over for some reason with our site.
Yeah, our site, still not, right?
It's still not, right?
I can't log into my email.
I couldn't, I just tried it now, and, and it kicked me out, no, it just kicked me out, it, it was working, yesterday it worked, today it's not working.
I used it this morning to check all the stuff.
I just tried looking out for it.
When was the last email target, today, or?
Oh, it's been a couple weeks now.
I had to call up a new email, a, a new, a new password, cause the old one didn't work, I got the password.
Well, you were supposed to change your password.
Originally, I did.
Okay. I changed mine, and it seemed to be working.
And now it's saying, it's asking for the password again, and my password's not working, so I'm off the, ducked it, jumped.
I don't think you're the right person to say that to them.
Are we, are we, are we done, do we wanna?
Adjourn.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you finish everything?
Yeah.
Nine o'clock, Colin.
Thank you.